...remotely, the camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the right-hand corner. When you reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click the button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice.
We have a proclamation tonight.
I need to do a roll call, sir.
Sorry, mad at myself. Kathy, would you call the roll?
Yes. Mayor Scully?
Here.
Councillor Delavos?
Here.
Councillor Fisher?
Here.
Councillor Kennedy?
Here.
Councillor Powers?
Here.
Councillor Reed?
Here.
Councillor Scandery?
Here.
Corn present.
We have a proclamation for Arts and Humanities Month. I will read that proclamation now. I guess I was a little excited to do it. Whereas, the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for over thirty years. And whereas, the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind; and whereas, the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American; and whereas, the arts and humanities plays a unique role in the life of our families, our communities, and our country; and whereas, the nonprofit arts industry also strengthens our national economy by generating one hundred thirty-five billion in total economic activity annually, and twenty-two-point-three billion in government revenue, and by supporting the full-time equivalent of four-point-one million jobs; and whereas, local organizations like the Augsburg Command Performances have dedicated -- have a dedicated and deep local tradition of supporting the arts and humanities here in our great city and North Country. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey M. Scully, hereby proclaim October to be National Arts and Humanities Month in the City of Augsburg, and call upon our citizens to continue promoting the arts, culture, and all forms of creative expression wherever possible. I'll sign this, and if you ladies would come down, I would like to present this with you.
No.
I have a phone, I can take it. Yeah.
If you want to. I feel healthy, you do.
Just take me a second, Nick, over there.
Thank you.
Kathy, do you not have to sign this? And thank you for all you do. I know my grandson was in one of the plays, and we still talk about it. He was little at the time, but he enjoyed it so much, and you bring some culture and enjoyment to it. Thank you.
Could I just introduce these two?
Oh, yes, yes.
My name is Sally Colau. I am the administrator for Augsburg Command Performances. This is Cindy Wilson. She has been in Augsburg Command Performances for over thirty years. That's how much she believes in the arts. And Pat Swan is a past president of the board, and currently the chairman of the Playbill Campaign and the nominated committee. So we're well represented tonight with these two.
We do not have any presentations tonight. Public hearings, we have three public hearings tonight. I think that might be a record for us. My time. The first public hearing is regarding an ordinance to amend Chapter Two Twenty-One entitled zoning, Section Two Twenty-One-eight entitled zoning map, parcels number forty-eight-point-zero-seven-seven dash one dash three point one, and forty-eight-point-zero-seven-seven dash one dash two point two, to be rezoned from moderate-density residential to residential business. It's going to be Bill Number Eighty-Eight, and I will open that to public hearing now. Our clerk will read a letter submitted for this public hearing, and then we'll have people speak after that.
Dear Mayor of Augsburg and City Council members, my husband and I purchased the Boathouse Camp property, 505 off Covington Street, in two thousand fourteen. The 505 Covington Street property behind us became available in late two thousand sixteen, and as we were both reaching retirement age, we decided to sell our large family home on Elizabeth Street, and we significantly downsized to Covington Street. We removed the existing trailer and purchased a modular home that was delivered in August of two thousand seventeen. My husband carefully studied and went to great lengths to position the new home to exactly choose the right spot, so we had the perfect view of the sunset from our living room. We have spent the last six years feverishly trying to improve the property on Covington Street, so it would be a beautiful, peaceful, enjoyable place to live and enjoy with our family and friends. Initially, we were rather unaffected when first informed of the plans to potentially turn the vasta property into a sixty-five-slot marina and restaurant. However, the more neighbors and friends described the reality of the situation, the more we became concerned about what this would do to the atmosphere of our forever home. First, one of the reasons we were attracted to purchasing the riverfront property was the gorgeous view of the river. Secondly, it was peaceful and private. A good portion of our view would become obstructed due to sixty-five boat slips. This leads to another concern of parking and traffic on Covington Street. There is literally very limited to no parking available on Covington Street. It has been a longstanding issue for the residents who live there. As a matter of fact, I believe it is one of the only streets in Augsburg that allows its residents to park on the street all winter long due to this issue. Knowing parking was an issue when we built our home, we took that into consideration when we located our new structure and thought we had accommodated for this, and our driveway is still blocked several times a year. Covington Street is only one block long. The street and river traffic would both be significantly increased, as well as the noise and loss of privacy that goes hand-in-hand with both. Breakwater engineering concerns. For the past six years, my husband has been endlessly cleaning up debris upon the riverbank ranging from kitchen cabinets to parts of docks and over one-hundred cedar poles. There is very little natural breakwater which exists upon the vasta property. According to mechanical engineer Kenneth Alone, owner of the company Five Star out of Kodak Park Rochester, without a significant man-made breakwater, part all of the proposed floating docks could end up strung all over the riverbank downstream during any fifty-five to sixty-mile-per-hour wind or storm. We would never have invested our life savings to build a retirement home next to a bar/restaurant/marina. And I believe most property owners would share and express the same concerns if they were presented with the same proposal. There is no doubt the vasta property is a beautiful lot. When we were burdened with two major floods, that property seemed unaffected, and we were sorry we did not purchase that property in the first place. We have had several citizens approach us asking for our advice on the property. As a matter of fact, I know of two families right now who are seriously interested in purchasing the property to build homes on. Those residential plans would be more fitting with the existing ambience of the neighborhood. As it stands right now, the proposed land use, we believe, will adversely impact the neighborhood to live without undue disturbances from nuisances from the form of noise, fumes, vibration, et cetera. Maybe the former Harbor Master Restaurant and Marina down next to the Augsburg Greenbelt would be a better fit for this proposal, as it would be more like the current existing neighborhood in appropriate harmony with the Augsburg Marina Boat Launch, Patterson Street Boat Launch, and Hosmer's Marina, the Tiki Bar, et cetera, where there are no homeowners located on the river in these locations. I pray that the Mayor of Augsburg and the City Council will look very carefully into this proposal of allowing this property to be rezoned. Sincerely, Kathleen Hillborne.
Would anyone like to come down to the podium and speak on this?
I would.
First of all.
You can take your mask off at the podium.
My name is Ernest Brothers. I live at five-twenty-four Covington Street. I purchased my house eighteen years ago. I grew up on Covington Street, watched Shade Roller, all the traffic that was down there. It's never been an issue to anybody on that street. I would love to see something come in there. It's a beautiful piece of property, and the city could use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Cheryl Richardson. I live at five-seven-seven-zero-A State Highway Thirty-Seven in Augsburg. First of all, I want to thank you for your time tonight in reviewing our proposition here. My husband is here with me tonight, his name is Frank, and we are speaking as interested purchasers of the property located on Covington Street. We feel this piece of riverfront would lend itself well to a variety of developmental projects. Boat dockage and retail services along the Saint River are in short supply at this time and would appear to be a viable option for development. Additionally, the waterfront is somewhat protected from the current in this area, which would lend itself to a safe marina. Again, these ideas are very preliminary at this point. We feel that improving the area will benefit our city in many ways. We hope to attract voters from up and down the river, as well as Canada after the pandemic. And we would also hope that our neighbors in Canton Pot Stadium and surrounding areas might make use of this area with whatever development is decided upon. We expect our project to complement and to enhance those local businesses on the river which are already bringing visitors to our city. And of course, we would increase the tax base to support Augsburg. Certainly, we must look at the hurdles to any project that we consider: investment return, DEC regulations, Army Corps of Engineer regulations. Any of these may prevent some of the options we are looking at. We are hopeful we can navigate these agencies to develop the area in a way that is consistent with the neighborhood and adds value to our city. The City of Augsburg has held its breath for years, as we hope for a large organization with deep pockets to come in and take over possibly the Shade Roller or the Diamond National property, and to rebrand Augsburg as a destination city. However, this hasn't happened yet. Maybe we need to rethink the idea of riverfront development to include projects on a slightly smaller scale. Possibly investment by our own citizens, such as Mr. Hosmer and Mr. Ferry, might be the starting point to develop the waterfront that we are so fortunate to have access to. This is exactly what we'd like to be a part of. We would like to invest in Augsburg and see our city benefit from the greatest assets, the Saint Lawrence River. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are you speaking, Joe?
Bear with me. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of the City Council, I am here to speak in favor of the zoning change regarding the properties on Covington Street. But first of all, I would like to -- I would be remiss in not commending the staff of the City Planner's Office, Ms. Smith especially, who with her knowledge and capability made this process simple and understandable. Thank you, Ms. Smith. In two thousand fourteen, we were fortunate enough to sell our business, leaving us with this piece of property, that's two-acre parcel with over four-hundred-foot of riverfront. This land is north of Covington Street and was originally used as a parking lot for standard Shade Roller, and then used in my landscaping business. I had approached the city to rezon the parcel from residential business to moderate-density housing, as at the time, there was interest in dividing the property and erecting single-family The change was approved, however, the interested parties backed out of the deal. At that time, in two thousand fourteen, it was placed in the hands of a realtor, and in six years, through all the advertising and everything that they've done, it was never shown once. Since this property has been historically rezoned residential business, and has always been in a commercial industrial district, I am seeking to change back to residential business. I would like to continue with a little more history. In two thousand seven, the City of Augsburg made a request for a proposal for development of the Diamond National property. They received three proposals from developers, two of which dropped out almost immediately, leaving the team of James Sharp of American Communities and Paul Nethers of Christian They had proposed single-family housing, single-family homes, multi-family units, retail space, and community areas. They had also proposed to acquire the standard Shade Roller property, tear it down, clean it up, and develop that parcel also. It was a very ambitious project, and it just got too complicated. That was thirteen years ago. The property still remains vacant. I am hoping that we can change that by encouraging development in that area. When I was at the planning board meeting, a member said that forest fires start with just a small spark, and he hoped that this may just be the spark to start development in this area. I had been recently approached by persons interested in developing this land for commercial These developers intend to take advantage of the river through a service-type business, which I strongly believe would be beneficial to the Augsburg. There are currently three similar businesses in the City of Augsburg. They are -- however, they are overwhelmed with customers and have an extensive waiting list for their services. I have reached out to two of the business owners, and each explained that they would be comfortable having this new venture in the city. They do not feel it would negatively impact their current level of operations, and as the third business is city-owned, I have not reached out to speak -- to seek their opinion. But due to the waiting list of potential customers, I doubt they would object. I personally know the persons interested in this pursuit. Their intention, in addition to start a business, is also to create a green space through landscaping. Their concept is to create a family-oriented space to enjoy the river. This would allow individuals and families to enjoy water-related recreational opportunities that may not otherwise be available to them. The Saint Lawrence River is one of, if not the, city's greatest asset, but it is largely overlooked when future development is addressed. At a time when businesses are closing and the city is losing tax-based income, it is imperative that we not allow this opportunity to pass based on a simple zoning issue. The potential for increased revenue for the city should be welcomed. Along with increasing the value of the parcel by placement of a business, there is also the potential for increased tourism, which could possibly positively impact local hotels, restaurants, the Remington, and retail outlets. Augsburg has thousands of feet of riverfront that has sat idle for too long. It's time to act and create that spark for waterfront development. Simply starting with one business may elevate us to rival other tourist destinations along the Saint Lawrence, such as Clayton and Alex Bay. Local politicians, over the years, have campaigned on riverfront development, business development, and increased tax base. Allowing this zoning change will help secure some of the promises that were made to citizens and may offer a rebirth to a city in distress. Additionally, making this zoning change will offer the city the advantage of continued tax collection through sales tax as opposed to yearly property taxes, should this remain zoned as moderate-density housing. Our City Manager, Mr. Jelly, stated in a letter published in the North Country Now dated October fifth, two thousand twenty, and I quote, "The mighty Saint Lawrence River continues to run vigorously between the borders of our great nation and that of our centuries-old neighbor, Canada. There is renewed interest in building on the waterfront with business and residential opportunities that will be the catalyst for growth of the Maple City so long sought after. Many of our local entrepreneurs are working diligently to grow their family businesses and reinvest in the city." Mr. Jelly's -- and that's unquote -- Mr. Jelly's quote resonates with me, not -- with me not only as a retired businessman, but as a lifelong resident of the City of Augsburg. While I operated Bastard Flowers, I was supported by our community, and in return, supported the community back. I have always held a belief in civic duty to ensure Augsburg was the best city it could I fully support new business in Augsburg and would encourage anyone considering launching a new business to consider Augsburg first. Augsburg, like many small cities across this country, has seen a decline in residents and in business. A favorable zoning change may prove to future developers that the City of Augsburg is willing to work through these issues that may otherwise stall any forward progress. I appreciate your time and consideration to this matter. I am available and willing to discuss any further questions or concerns you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the audience? Is there anyone who would like to speak?
I wrote a letter, but she didn't read it. Do you want me to read it by myself?
I didn't receive one from you, sir. I'm happy to read it. Whichever you prefer. I only got one.
Good evening.
And you can take your mask off if you're comfortable.
Okay, thanks. My name is Ken Hillborne, and my wife Kathleen and I spent the last six years trying to make the riverfront on Covington Street a more beautiful place to live and enjoy with our family and friends. When Butch first described his and Frank Richardson's plan of turning the vasta property into a marina and restaurant, I really didn't think much of it. However, the more people described the reality of the situation, the more I slowly became concerned. First of all, one of the reasons I was attracted to purchasing the Boathouse Camp from Mark Valley was an uninhibited view of the river all the way to Brockville. My wife, as everyone knows via Facebook, is also a huge lover of sunsets. If Frank and Butch's plan achieves fruition, then a good portion of my view would then become that of sixty-five boats, numerous docks, and boat trailers. Next, I'm a bit afraid of all the boat traffic. As it is now, my daughter Grace and her friends take off on their jet skis without a whole lot of words. With sixty-five or more boats potentially coming in and out of a newly planned marina, I will constantly be worrying about her and her friends colliding with someone or something. Furthermore, the channel in front of Covington Street is generally known to be narrow because of a large shoal out front. This will lead to a funnel of all waterfront traffic and either further congestion and potential for accidents. Moreover, I am also a bit concerned or worried about the noise. Yes, everybody knows my friend and family like to hang out on the riverbank on Saturday night. However, the music is generally provided by my D-Walt battery-powered shop radio. Multiply that times sixty-five, or from bands at the restaurant slash bar, and we really don't know what to expect. Finally, I would like to say that Covington Street is a residential area and is zoned as such. Personally, I would like to see a few new homes, such as my own, built on the vasta property, as opposed to a restaurant and a marina. I am all for expanding our city's tax base, but the research has shown me that sixty percent of all new restaurants don't make it past the first year, and eighty percent of businesses fail within four years. A perfect example is the Harbor Master Restaurant and Marina down next to the Augsburg Greenbelt. In contrast, how many abandoned riverfront homes does anyone know of? I have been informed that there are currently two different families seriously interested in purchasing this property for residential purposes, one of whom is here tonight and is also speaking for the second party. Overall, I trust the City Council will look very carefully into this issue and not make any hasty decisions into rezoning a long-established city residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
My name is Donna Trim. I'm the other -- I'm the --
I'm the other, I'm the party he just mentioned interested in purchasing for residential purposes. I'm representing myself and Eric and Heather Stevenson, who are interested in purchasing the other half. And I don't know if there's anyone else here who lives on Covington Street who's also concerned about the commercial development, but hopefully they'll come forward and speak if they are. If there's no one else here who lives on Covington Street, I just want to just put a voice out there for those people. You know, I think if, and I could be wrong, but I think if this were being proposed on like Proctor Avenue, this might be a little bit more difficult to sell because those people have some money and they've got some clout. And the people on Covington may be a little less affluent, maybe a little less influential. And so I just want to put that voice out there on their behalf that this is a residential neighborhood and that this is just going to change their life. As Ken described, it's going to be a significant change in their quality of life. So just something to think about. I know you have to do what's best for the city, but part of doing what's best for the city is doing what's best for the residents in the neighborhoods. So that's my voice. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Frank Richardson. And I haven't decided exactly what I want to do with this property. I may not put a restaurant there, but I do want to put a marina there. I haven't ruled out putting residential housing in there, you know? I don't know if it'd be feasible to do it. A couple of small condos like they got in Moorestown. I've been even leaning towards that, but I don't know what I'm going to do with it, but it's just too nice a piece of property to just leave and do nothing with or just put a couple more residential houses there because sooner or later, somebody's going to take that shade roller property and chances are, that's not going to be residential. So they keep talking about a restaurant. That probably may not even happen, but the marina would happen. Maybe like a small bait shop or something, and then decide what I want to do with the rest of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak in the audience?
My name is Alex Rule. I live in 540 Covington, right on the corner. We would be right up the street from whether it's going to be a construction or a private housing. I trust you guys to make the right decisions as far as what's best for the city. I would like to see it remain a residential area. We've got a lot of young children that live and play on that street, and I worry about traffic and how it would be with them. They would lose their only playground in the area. There's nothing really there for them to do besides that protected street area. So that would be a concern of mine as well. Just please take that into consideration because those, they work all the time and they're not home to be here right now, so, like she said. But I'm from there, so I would like to stay residential.
Well, thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone remotely, Kathy?
I'm checking now. I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. If there's no one else, then I'll declare this hearing closed. And our second is Director of Planning and Development Andrea Smith will speak for the next public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here this evening to give you an introduction to the second public hearing of the evening, which is a proposal, which is the public hearing on a proposal to prepare a 2021 EPA cleanup grant application. Part of the requirements to prepare a cleanup grant application is that the city prepare and have available for comment a draft ABCA. An ABCA is the acronym for Analysis of Brownfield Cleanup Alternatives. We have had one prepared on our behalf by Barton and Le Judas. This is a document that outlines the environmental cleanup alternatives that were evaluated for federally funded remediation projects. Again, this is a requirement for EPA cleanup grants in addition to the asbestos survey that the city had done in 2014. So in accordance with the requirements, I'm just going to go through a few highlights from that report, and then we will accept public comments. In 2014, the city did conduct an asbestos survey which did outline friable asbestos as well as non-friable asbestos. Friable materials are those which can be crushed or pulverized when dry by hand, by hand pressure alone. These materials include but are not limited to pipe and pipe fitting insulation, boiler and hot water insulation, spray insulation, and troweled on materials including sealing plaster. Non-friable materials, which do not readily release fibers into the atmosphere because they are locked into a matrix of material, however, these are, these are also a health risk and should be taken seriously when disposed of. Both friable and non-friable materials require oversight when being removed by the Department of Labor. The ABCA identifies two cleanup alternatives that were considered to address the presence of asbestos containing material within the building structure. The building has been deemed, the building I should say is 221 Ford Street, excuse me. Should have started with that. The building has been deemed by the Building Code Enforcement Officer to be structurally unsound and not safe to enter. Therefore, it is not possible to include a cleanup alternative that addresses the performance of asbestos abatement while leaving the building structure intact. The ABCA addresses the ability to implement associated cost and effectiveness of each cleanup alternative. There are two alternatives that are outlined in the ABCA. The first is a no action alternative. Every ABCA is required to have a no action alternative because you always have the alternative to do nothing. This alternative consists of completing no asbestos containing material removal or other remedial actions at the site. Alternative number two is the full building demolition and removal with asbestos in place. This alternative consists of demolition of the entire building structure with asbestos in place and properly disposing of all building debris as asbestos containing material. Also included in this alternative is full site restoration upon demolition and removal of the building structure, which includes reestablishing vegetation. Alternative two is the preferred alternative as the demolition of the structure is unsound and does contain asbestos, which is a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the immediate neighborhood and to all city residents. Furthermore, productive reuse of this property will positively contribute to the city's tax roll. The estimated cost from Barton and Le Judas to complete the demolition and asbestos abatement is $692,000, and this would be eligible if awarded through the cleanup grant. The city is allowed to apply for up to $500,000 in federal funding, and it does require a 20% cost share. So I'll just, a reminder, this is 212 Ford Street, which was originally constructed as a department store in 1940. It's located in the downtown mall area, and the city acquired this through the tax sale foreclosure process on June 23rd, 2010.
So this is a public hearing regarding a resolution to submit
Thank you, Mayor.
to 2021 EPA cleanup grant application, an amount of $500,000 for asbestos abatement and demolition of 212 Ford Street. It is going to be bill number 90, and I will open that to public hearing up now. Would anyone care to speak on this?
Just a quick thing. Demolishing sounds like the right idea. Take the foundations out if you want to repurpose the property. Unlike the nursing home on Lafayette Street that had the foundations left in there, who's going to redevelop that when you got to invest all that other money? So the $500,000 grant would be great, but do a little bit extra and get the foundation out of there is all I would say.
Anyone else? Is there anyone remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
I'll declare this public hearing closed. Our final public hearing is regarding a local law to amend sections C-9, B, and C-17, and C-99 of the Augsburg City Charter. It's going to be bill number 91, and I will open that public hearing now. Anyone wish to come down and speak on this? Anyone remotely, Kathy?
I do not see any hands raised.
I'll declare this public hearing closed, and this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address counsel, please come down to the podium. You have five minutes.
This is where you get participation or you have to sign up for this?
No, no.
This is where you just get to talk about general? So I'm Trisha Emo. Hate public speaking, but I feel like I do it a lot. My teachers will probably hate me or be really proud of me because I used to fail subjects for not doing it. But I did vote for the Four Stooges, and I refer to it.
Does that make it first? No, please, no name.
Oh, no, I'm not. I'm not. It's a good thing.
Well, that was...
I'm sorry. I was saying in a, in a nice way that you'll see. So I referred to it as that, as I'm still a supporter, and I was saying it in a way that they shouldn't be called that. Sorry that it came out like that, but yes, I did. And my idea of saying that was just because I actually supported all you guys. I supported everyone, and I continue to do so. I do feel like everybody thinks differently, and I accept that. I also, I supported people for change, and I supported people for the passion that everybody has, everyone. I really do. My son's autistic, you know, I'll get back to this too, but he, when he was younger, he had this big issue with Frosty the Snowman. I'm sure everybody knows the song, right? So as a mom, we said, you know, Jimmy, that's not just a song. You can sing all the time. It's a Christmas song. He looked at me and said, well, no, Mom, it's a winter song. No, it's not. You know, I'm here first. I knew better, whatever. And then when I thought about it, it does not mention Christmas. We thought two different things, but that doesn't mean that each one of us was wrong. He was right. I was also right. I was taught that was a Christmas song. Don't run around singing it. I know people are scared. I was scared. I, I lost my job. Well, not really lost my job. My company had closed my building.
She said speaker.
Sorry. My company closed our building, and I had to be moved to a different building. And what I mean, I was scared crack was I was scared. I was really, really scared. I have huge anxiety issues, but it was the best thing that ever happened, this huge change. I, I didn't know what was going on, but it worked. I had to take that leap of faith and do it. And again, I don't like everything that Mike does, or you do, or that one does, or anyone in this whole entire building. I don't like everything that my, my wife does. I don't like everything that my son does, and I don't like anything that my, or everything that my boss does. But sometimes I have to put my like own biased opinions away and just trust them. You know, I have to trust my autistic son when he tells me that Frosty the Snowman is a winter song and not a Christmas song. With first responders, when there was that whole thing, I probably shouldn't even be bringing it up because no one mentioned it yet, but I do want to say I came from a domestic violence situation. So policemen and first responders, yeah, they were my saviors. They really were. My life was scary, so I have full respect for them. So I understand when they get scared about what's going on and if there is changes. But at the same time, like I said before, I was really scared with my changes. I mean, healthcare sucks. We, we're losing our jobs left and right, and my big company has had a lot of changes. But I just, I guess all in all, I just feel like everyone does think differently, and maybe you guys will walk away tonight and still have huge differences, but for the time being, sometimes we just have to take that leap of faith. I mean, politics, no one likes politics. I say it all the time when they're in my garage, we're hanging out, no politics, no religion, no nothing, especially if you're drinking like, there's going to be a brawl. You're my best friend, and I'm going to hate you tomorrow because if you mention politics, you know, it doesn't work out. But no one's going to like everybody. Everyone has their own opinions, and doesn't always mean you're right. And yeah, you might take that leap of faith, and they may screw it all up, you know? You may say, hey, I have misfaith in this person, and they may totally mess it up, but they're human. Everybody messes up, and all of you guys are on here because you do love Augsburg. I'm not even from Augsburg, but I, I do love it now, and that's why I would support all of you. And I know it's hard. I mean, I work with 30 women. Try 30 women and tell them how to do things. It doesn't work out all the time, but I guess that's what I was just saying. I just watched it, and I keep just thinking like, I got to say something. But yeah, I, I respect all of you. I respect you. Thanks, welcome aboard. Crazy, crazy train, but see, there you go. You have passion for jumping on board with this, you know? Everybody does. Nobody loves like Como, not everybody loves Trump, not, you know, like the whole nine. It doesn't start just, it's with cities and it's with everywhere. No one's going to always agree, but it, it can work. And if everyone works together or tries really hard and puts all that energy and just says, you know what? I'd rather just do it and be happy than be right, maybe just jump on board and try, you know?
Thank you.
That's it. And again, sorry. Sorry to that. My wife's probably like, yeah, good job, Trish. Screwed that up.
Very good advice for all of us.
Angie McRoberts, 337 Proctor Ave. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Tonight, I would like to speak on two things, transparency and planning. At the September 28th meeting, you voted on a resolution to expedite transferring dispatch services from Augsburg to St. Lawrence County. Little did we, the taxpayers or select councilors, know that Matt Denner had written a lengthy, three-page explanation of why this window of three months was not feasible. On the very day Mr. Jelly was granted the position of city manager, he withheld this letter during the meeting, prior to the vote, and discussion. Mr. Jelly knew the contents of this letter, had the letter in his possession, and had ample time to print the letter, forward the letter to council, read the letter, or ask the city clerk to read this letter as part of correspondence. I'm certain that although the agenda had been created, no one would have voiced concern over this document being presented prior to the vote as a part of the discussion. In North Country Now, you stated that Mr. Denner made it clear at 6:13 PM that he would not be able to attend the meeting. To say that you were not able to effectively share this information with 47 minutes to spare prior to the meeting leads us to be concerned with your ability to facilitate information in a timely manner. A man of your background should have been able to communicate this to council. You went as far as to say that this project was two-thirds complete, direct quote, but that, also a direct quote, essentially no work had been done by the county so far. So in fact, nothing had been completed, no planning with the county administration or an agreement as to who's going to pay for this. The county has made it clear that a cost analysis will need to be performed and that the city will have to pay for part of this upgrade. In your resolution, you threatened the county with a lawsuit. Has the city attorney reviewed your threat? Is there a case for the city, and how much will this cost? So in reality, how much money will this save the taxpayers of Augsburg? I'm particularly grateful to our county government for putting the brakes on a change in procedure that could ultimately impact the safety of our citizens and our first responders. The select few council members and their need for instant gratification with little thought of a plan has been detrimental to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, good evening. Sarah Raven, 212 David Street. Tonight, I'd like to talk about a couple things. When I look at the majority that sit here in front of us tonight, a few things keep coming to mind in a couple different words. It's misogynistic. It's manipulating. And when you look at a governing body, I'm not saying that it should be all sunshine, roses, and perfect. But I think that we put trust in the fact that the people sitting here that were voted in, we should be able to trust them, and that they're looking at the best interest of the citizens of the city. I would like to first address a comment that was made last, at the last meeting. And it was in regard to women in general, not being needed in a position of city manager. I found this comment to be extremely insulting, disrespectful, and not only from my seat, but for many women that work for this city and for this community as a whole. I think I can speak for many, if not all of us, that a comment of this magnitude is revolting. I'm astonished this day and age that somebody could make a comment with such disregard for the feelings of their peers, coworkers, and any other woman in this community. Is it not your duty to serve this city with integrity? Because honestly, I think that you're failing miserably.
That was said, excuse me, that was said...
I'm gonna finish my, what I have to say first, I think.
So I just want to make that clear. It was not said from anyone here.
To continue with this, if this man is so very qualified, then why is it on tonight's agenda that we're going to bring in an accounting firm to assess and build the city budget? Answer this for me. Was it not the duty of past city managers to do this? Why is the question continually asked to show job duties and descriptions for this position, but those things are never answered? Is it because you're making it up as you go? If you claim the city's in such poor financial shape, don't you think you would want to use the resources of the teams that you have before going to an outside firm? Is it simply because every qualified person that you had is no longer employed by the city? What if this firm brings in a team of women? Are you going to fire them too? I'd also like to remind you of the fact that the voting population of the city is not just made up of males. Next, I'd like to talk about the lack of transparency between this council that sits here in front of us. Why is it that so many times during these meetings that the comment is made, the minority at the table have no idea, and this is the first time they're hearing about something? Maybe some of you up there have never had to go to work with people that you don't see eye to eye with, but the only way to get the job done is to put your personal feelings aside and do the job at hand. A little advice, and I know this coming from a woman, you may not like to listen to it, but stop bickering, and stop tearing each other apart, and actually do something to put that effort toward the greater good of the city, and attempt to make some changes that will actually help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else would like to speak?
Thank you.
I am not seeing any hands raised.
Okay.
None.
And this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
We have none.
We have none. Okay, now we're at, next we have our consent agenda. The claims is enumerated in General Fund Warrant Number 16-2020 in the amount of $1,494,966.20. And Library Warrant Number 16-2020 in the amount of $19,256.98. And Capital Fund Warrant Number 16-2020 in the amount of $6,415,582.79. And Community Development Fund Warrant Number 16-2020 in the amount of $11,437.66. And Community Renewal Fund Warrant Number 16-2020 in the amount of $0. As audited, be and the same hereby are ordered paid. I so move. One second. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaboff?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
No.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
No.
Approved.
Okay, we have no appointments tonight. And this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 221 entitled zoning, Section 221-8 entitled zoning map, parcels 48.077-1-3.1 and 48.077-1-2.2, to be rezoned from moderate-density residential to residential business. Be it ordained and enacted by the City Council of the City of Augsburg, New York as follows. Item Number 1: Amendment of Chapter 221, Section 221-8 entitled zoning map. That section, 221-8 entitled zoning map, is hereby amended to read as follows. That section, number 48.077, block number 1, lot number 3.1, and section number 48.077, block number 1, lot number 2.2, with frontage on Covington Street in the City of Augsburg, which is zoned moderate-density residential, is hereby rezoned to residential business. Item Number 2: This ordinance shall take effect 10 days after publication of a notice which shall give the title and describe same in summary form.
I move that.
I'll second.
So...
Don't touch the table there.
I love your sunset pictures. But, you know, I've been sitting here for 10 years. And 10 years ago, before I even got on council, there was a community plan put together to develop the property, try to, in this area. Connect the trail system, four businesses. We had great community discussions, lots of them. And we were hoping to connect the trail system, that developers would come in the area, and they would, they would also bring a trail there, why wouldn't they? To their business, so people can come and eat, or have coffee, or whatever type of businesses are gonna be there, and create a sense of vibrancy in the City of Augsburg, and try and join and expand the town and our waterfront. And then I remember when we sold the property to Joe, and the changes that have taken place, and different interests and developers. I've seen developers come to the Diamond Property, and we have developers right now that want the Diamond Property, want to expand it, which are gonna make a whole lot more noise than a restaurant, I'll tell you that. And there's also standards with our BOA and LWRP project that any building that is made has to, has to fit what the community asks for. And that's how we got this cleanup money. It was a community decision to develop the area, to develop our waterfront. And I sat in on a lot of those meetings, and I understand the concerns of the neighborhood, and I appreciate that. I'm gonna support development in this area and the zoning change. So I just wanted to make that clear to everybody.
Anyone else? I think this is gonna be very beneficial to Augsburg. I'm glad to see you. We're all the best in the city. You'd be commended, and hopefully others will follow your lead. There's a need for additional boat slips. It's just gonna enhance the whole city, make it better for more citizens to be able to have their boats here. But also too, the more that the waterfront's developed, the more it'll bring in, and all the businesses will prosper. So I'm for it. And it is unfortunate that, you know, one thing, a positive thing, may be a detriment to another. But for the city as a whole, this is a tremendous thing, and I commend you on doing it. It's not always easy, you know, putting your money up like that and taking that risk, and, you know, it's great you're doing it. Anyone else?
I just wanted to thank Andrea for being easy to work with. I know I spoke of tonight that she was easy to work with as far as paperwork and things like that. I think that's just a great face to have on City Hall, that people know that they can come in with questions, and it just shows that we are open for business. So I just wanted to thank Andrea.
I just want to give back Dan's comments. You know, it's a tough decision. I mean, you have residential, and it's a small stretch of residential in the city at Covington Street. It's not, it's not, you know, a quarter mile, or a half a mile, or anything like that. It's a small window there. And, but ultimately, going forward in the BOA restriction on Brownfield, as Dan mentioned, you know, these are old, these are old endeavors that, to get them cleaned up, was to get them back on the rolls. And we can't, you know, at this time, we simply can't. I'm sure Mr. Richardson, finally, will work with the city and the community in creating any plight. I don't see any plight coming from any of their operations in any way, shape, or form. But I would have to support this as well.
Now, I don't have this on my sheet. I have, you were gonna talk about the cleanup of the EPA. Are we voting on this?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Okay, my paperwork doesn't show it. But, so Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaboff?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Now, I have Andrea to speak about EPA cleanup grant on my sheet.
That's correct. A resolution to submit a 2021 EPA cleanup grant application in the amount of $500,000 for asbestos abatement and demolition of 212 Ford Street. A resolution to authorize the submission of a 2021 Environmental Protection Agency cleanup grant application. Whereas grants up to $500,000 are available to address hazardous substances and/or petroleum contamination at one or more Brownfield sites through the fiscal year 2021 EPA requests for applications. And whereas the City of Augsburg desires to submit an application for funding to support the abatement of hazardous materials, including asbestos-cotany material at 212 Ford Street, currently owned by the City of Augsburg. And whereas, in accordance with the application requirements, the City Council held a public hearing on said application and the draft appica at City Hall 330 Ford Street, Augsburg, New York, today, the 13th day of October 2020. All those desired to be heard were heard, and their comments duly recorded at this hearing. And whereas, if received, the required 20% cost share, equal to $100,000, will be paid for out of account number A8020.515. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council supports the submission of this fiscal year 2021 EPA cleanup grant application, seeking $500,000 in grant funds to complete eligible cleanup activities, including demolition at 212 Ford Street. Be it further resolved, that the Augsburg City Manager or his designee is hereby authorized to submit said 2021 EPA cleanup grant application, and if received, to enter into any necessary contracts to accept and administer said grant in a timely manner.
I'll move that.
One second.
Yep.
Discussion?
Who moved it? Dan? Yeah, I have a question. So the city's 20%. Is it possible that that can be in-kind service? So as, I know we have 100 grand stretched out, or, excuse me, earmarked, but is it possible that we could use some in-kind service to make up for that 20%? And that way, if we need extra money to remove foundations, we can do that, and make sure that the foundations are removed, so that we're not stuck with what we have over on Lafayette Street?
EPA grants do not allow for in-kind contributions towards your required match. So, again, earlier in this evening, I told council and the public that the current estimate we have, which obviously this would go to bid, so it could come in less. But presently, the bid we have to do demolition is $692,000, which is $92,000 in excess of the $500,000 plus the $100,000. So if there is some way that the city can provide in-kind services to offset the actual bid amount in some way, whether it's hauling materials, or site work, or something of that nature, in addition to the cash match that is required, then we could do that. But it cannot count towards the minimum match. The city also can request a waiver of the match, but in this case, we wouldn't be able to demonstrate that we would have adequate funding with just the $500,000, based on the engineer's estimate.
So is the low bid right now, does that include foundation removal?
Just an estimate.
That's just an engineer's estimate. It would have, if we are successful. Typically, these are awarded in the spring, May, June timeframe typically. So I know we're not in a typical time, so I don't, I don't know when they would really be announced, but typically, they're in May or June. And we would be looking at fall, or at the earliest, that this would kind of go out to bid. And probably, it would be spring of 2022 when we would actually be looking at demolition, if this grant is successful.
Thank you.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Dillaboff?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Counselor Reach.
This is the local law to amend Sections C9B, C17, and C99 of the Augsburg City Charter. Suspicious in summary form?
Okay, I'll introduce that item. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
I think it's ridiculous that we're removing one of the last democratic features of the charter. I don't support it, won't support it. Obviously, last, last meeting, I tried to call for a referendum after citizens put up signatures, and I just don't think it's right at all. I think, I think there's no reason for it. We should leave it in. And personally, I think if there's changes to be made, and, and council makes a move that you see a substantial portion of the city disagree with, what's wrong with a referendum? Let the chips fall. That's, that's what I say. Let the chips fall. And democracy is democracy. Unless you got something to hide, or you're just completely anti-democracy, let the chips fall. Win, lose, or draw. I said something like that to Counselor Powers recently, when I put that other agenda. Maybe we're wrong on some of these issues. I don't know. Let the chips fall.
Do you understand the issue there?
Yeah, that a referendum was put in here, in this charter, and for a reason. To allow democracy to happen, to allow the people to vote on an issue that is strong enough. And, and so I'm not gonna vote to remove it, period.
Democracy happened last November, and we're here, and that's, that's it. So, and that's what you need to, please, you know, and that's what needs to be accepted. Democracy is not lost, I understand, not at all. Anyone else?
Yeah, I completely disagree with your statement. Completely. Yours.
Oh, you're looking at him?
No, no, I'm looking at you. You know I am.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So all that aside, the whole reason why this is in place, this reeks, reeks of nepotism and political favoritism, completely. I could get into it right now, but I'm not going to. It's all, I'd rather have a conversation later down the road. Maybe I'd bring it up in new business. Who knows? But the fact of the matter is, we know, I know, there are conversations being had outside this chamber, outside this building, with people over our insurance, over some of our future endeavors coming forward, that are all connected to certain individuals that work for the city. This allows this body to pretty much do whatever you want. And the whole reason why they are here is to... to prevent it. To prevent political favoritism. That's why it's all here in the first place. Every, everything that you've done from January to now has been a complete disregard to the process and the form of government in which this city operates. If you wanted to change it, there were steps to go and do it instead of just looking to do it through public law. I don't support it. In four years, none of us may even be up here. And then the other ones that are coming in are going to inherit this mess. And it's a mess, and it's building to be a big mess. That's my opinion. I'll leave it there, but I will not support this in any way, shape, or form.
Well, your opinion's wrong and, uh, so, quiet, quiet, please. So...
You interrupted a woman up here for public appearance earlier. And now you're telling people there to be quiet. What? You think you're going to throw me out of here? You're nuts.
Hey.
Let the citizens speak.
No. That you had your time.
You interrupted a woman at the party. You're a public appearance freak.
That's enough. We're having discussion now. Hey. The next outburst, you'll leave. Really, Mike? You are, you're dishonoring this council. Steve, I want that gentleman out. He's been warned.
It's not lawful order. With, uh, with all...
Is he being removed?
It's not lawful order. You know, you can't throw the public out of a public hearing.
I can do, I can run this. It's not going to be disruption.
With all due...
I want this gentleman out. He's been warned. Is he going to be removed, or I'm going to, I'm going to close the meeting now?
Ask whomever it is you want to leave.
What?
Just ask whomever it is that you want to leave. Ask whomever it is that you want to leave.
I want that gentleman right there in the blue jacket with the red trim. Please leave.
It's a public meeting. I love saying...
You're not allowed to speak on a turn, and you've been asked to stop.
Mr. Scully, you stood right over there last November, and you screamed at the city council. I believe that the ones out there remember that. You screamed right...
And, and I stopped. And I stopped. And I stopped. Do you want to sit and stop talking? Or do you want to leave? Do you want to leave?
Why are you scared of people speaking up and speaking out?
Chief Westcott, would you make him move? Remove him, please?
Don't bother. I'll do it. I'll go.
Thank you. Thank you. And next time come, just be respectful. Are you going to be quiet then?
Let's continue.
If I could make some...
Sure.
So just for clarification, um, C9B clears up the language due to a, due to a, I don't know if people can hear me or not, due to a previous amendment. And, um, and the other two provisions, uh, you know, there was a proposal for a referendum, and we learned from our lawyer, and everybody on council has two legal opinions from, uh, our lawyers that this is contrary to state law. So the purpose of this amendment is very simply to make this charter conform with state law. Anything that's being said beyond that just, uh, is not accurate. So, I will support.
In your opinion?
No, it's, it's kind of fact.
That's not what the Attorney General's office says.
Oh, well, if you want to share that with me, I'd love to read it.
I just did. I didn't share. It was a phone conversation.
We'd all like to read it.
I'll give you our number.
Okay. Well, Kathy, would you call the roll?
I have something to say.
Oh, yes. Go ahead.
The lawyer is not always right, Mayor. You are on the record stating, I was sitting right there, where the lawyer got up, the attorney, and he spoke, and he wanted any one of us to be able to contact him. And I made a statement, and you said, "The city attorney is not always right. He is not always right." So, that's a matter of opinion. So, the matter of opinion that those two attorneys have, attorneys aren't always right.
That's why we went, that's why we went to a second one, Nicole.
They're still not always right.
That was a good effort, you know, to, to lawyers. Anyone else?
It wasn't a second opinion. All he did was review the statement. He did not get his own research.
Thank you. We had two. So, uh, please, yes, Steve?
It was legal and the attorneys were correct. And on September 2nd, it was accepted by the Secretary of State, signed and put into law. Um, so, I think to say the attorneys were incorrect is, just doesn't make any sense at all because the Secretary of State, when they reviewed it, would not have put their stamp on it if it wasn't legal. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Steve.
That was a different issue, wasn't it?
No, that's why, that's why this, this, this one's out there today, Dan.
It wasn't the referendum issue. The issue then was the change in the, in the charters.
No, but because of the re, because of the referendum, the one that was passed on the 2nd of September with the Secretary of State, brought upon the changes for C17 and C99 because they were, after that, they were, they were illegal. They didn't follow New York state law. So, this, like John said, this is just a cleanup of it, and this is exactly what the attorneys said on that also. So, I, I don't understand how the attorneys can be wrong on this, and the Secretary of State can be wrong on it, but some people can know more. I, I fail to see the logic.
Disagree. Disagree.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
No.
Counsel Powers?
No.
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Dillabow?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
Is summary form okay? Perfect. A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with John Deere to purchase a 2019 John Deere 310 SL backhoe loader.
Yeah, just, just explain in layman's terms so everybody...
It's a new backhoe. And we're using leftover chip funding?
You know, Scott, you know, it's really not necessary, you know? This is a city council meeting. Why don't you obey the rules of the council meeting? And that goes for our employees too. All I'm, all I'm looking for, all I'm looking for is, uh, an explanation in regards to, you need a new backhoe. This is a trade. We're, we're trading here.
Yeah, we're trading in a 1995 Ford triple nickel backhoe. And we're using funds from chips, almost 50,000 in leftover money to other lines to purchase it.
Very good.
I'll move that.
Second.
Glad to see you get some new equipment. Um, any more, uh, discussion? Kathy, would you call the roll?
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Dillabow?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
I think I got it.
Oh.
Sorry.
Steve, John?
Summary, okay? A resolution to approve the sale of former Paper Haywood Street for $1,500 to Aaron T. Smith and Shelby Smith.
I'll move that.
Second.
Discussion? Kathy, would you call the roll?
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Dillabow?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
All right. Next item of business will be read by Police Chief Robert Westcott.
Mayor, I think you're out of order, sir.
You got number six?
Am I?
Ninety-six.
We're on...
We're on number six on, on your agenda.
I, I'm, uh, see, I'm on five, Police Chief Westcott.
Tax auction for multiple properties.
Bill number ninety-six.
This is the public, uh, auction, right?
Bill number ninety-six?
I missed something on mine.
You crossed this one out, sir.
A resolution declaring surplus property and authorizing the city manager to hold a public auction.
All right, so move.
Second.
Discussion?
So you, so you basically went through the list of, uh, properties that, uh, are owned by the city and determined that these were surplus and, and recommending a public auction?
Yes, sir.
Who moved it? Second? Sorry.
I moved it. Hold a second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Dillabow?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Now, our next item of business will be read by Police Chief Robert Westcott. Sorry for making you go back and forth.
All right, I think on page 27. Luckily enough, you have a map of the area I'm going to be talking about. It was, uh, in your agenda for another reason, but it just happens to be there, so it might be helpful to look at it. I'll read it in summary form. This is a resolution to call for a public hearing and public notice on a proposed ordinance amending chapter 209, section 209 dash 48, schedule 11, titled Parking Prohibited, prohibited at All Times of the Augdensburg Municipal Code. And essentially, what this is, is to repeal a section of the OMC that says no parking from Allen Street, uh, westbound to 30 feet past Madison. It's not signed at all. Uh, there's no, no parking signs. And, uh, so it's not enforced anyway. Um, what we want to do, that's the north side of the street. We want to move the no parking to the south side of the street for a few reasons. Um, so that is also State Highway 68. It's got a double solid line painted down the, uh, not quite center of the road. So what happens is traffic coming into the city from Morristown traveling eastbound are funneled into a single lane. Traffic heading out of the city westbound get a lane and a half, but there's no parking on that side of the street where there's more room. And there's a, it allows for parking on the south side of the street where there's no room. So cars have to cross the double solid line. There's not enough room for vehicles to park. That side of the street has several blank lots, um, a large apartment building that has its own parking lot, a business that has its own parking lot, several fire hydrants, um, where the opposite side of the street that has more room is where a majority of the residents, uh, live, and they would be able to park in front of their residents. It's just swapping sides.
Yeah. Really makes sense when you look at it.
I'll, uh, is that removed?
Yep.
No, has not.
I'll move that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought...
And the second was, thank you.
Any discussion? Uh, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counsel Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Dillabow?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Approved.
Uh, our next item of business will be read by City Manager Stephen Jellie.
A resolution to retain Gray and Gray Certified Public Accountants PC to complete the 2021 budget and assist with providing a common operating picture to counsel of the current status of the city's finances, past, present, and future.
What's the, uh, I'll, well, someone's got to make a motion here, I guess.
I'll make a motion.
I can discuss it.
I'll make a motion in a second.
Yep, I'll second it.
I'm just, what's the, uh, the dollar value here and, uh...
Excuse me, uh, counsel, it's not to, it's going to be not to exceed 5,000 is what I've talked to them about. I don't, uh, I don't think we'll be anywhere near that. What I'm looking for now is, uh, just largely some technical support to, uh, fill in for the absence of not having the comptroller. Already, the office was a little short of staff to work in this area, so this will give us a firm with municipal expertise to close up, uh, what was about the last third of the budget. We were, we were getting pretty close. We just need the, the support to finish it up.
Let's put the expenditure and the appropriation in the future once I realize it's an emergency, but they're important items.
Yeah, agree.
Any further discussion?
Was this cut out to bid?
Nope.
Have they been retained?
Yep. We, we have a budget due on November 1st. There's, uh, there's largely no time for me to be able to properly, uh, put, put this, uh, this raises a minimal amount of work out to bid.
It's an emergency.
Correct.
Um, Angela Gray, uh, she just, uh, won Woman of the Year in St. Lawrence County. Pretty smart people. They do, uh, all the work for Canton, Village of Canton.
I thought we had an, uh, an agreement with the outgoing comptroller that he would work part-time to help assist with this budget.
We did, and, uh, he backed out of the agreement shortly after agreeing to it.
He backed out?
He did.
Wouldn't the state comptroller's office come in and help us?
No. And, and we're not looking for, for high technical support. I really just need the, uh, the support to be able to finish getting the numbers, to, uh, to scrub everything down. And then ultimately, I'm trying to do is, is provide you all an easy-to-read picture. You know, the budget documents right now is over 100 pages for you to look at. I'm trying to present you all with some graphs and charts and some things that can, uh, can be viewed quickly. Uh, this, this budget, uh, there'll be, there'll be significant, uh, tough decisions to be able to make to, uh, to balance this budget. And I'd like you all to be able to see a curve and a graph of, of where we've been, how long this problem's been going on. I suspect that some of you have known how long this problem's been going on and, uh, where, where we are going, as was given to us by the State Financial Restructure Board last year at this same time.
To you. That was, when Financial Restructure Board was when?
June 2019. You were given the report.
The report, right? They came in, did the analysis in 17?
No, uh, largely, yeah, end of 18, yep.
So, um, did you reach into the comptroller's office?
No. It's, it, there is not a need for, for a comptroller at this time. And honestly, I, I've reached the Financial Restructure Board on multiple occasions. Uh, they're willing to provide us any additional support that they haven't already provided us, but, but honestly, counsel, they've provided us with the facts. We just have to act on them.
But that's what they can do. They can help compile the facts and put them into a budget force. That's, that's what they do.
They won't do our budget.
Yeah. They don't create local budgets, counsel.
Tim Ryan does them.
Um, any further discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counsel Dillabow?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
No.
Counsel Powers?
No.
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Counsel Scamperly?
No.
Approved.
Our, our next item of business will be read by City Manager Stephen Jellie.
Resolution to appoint legal firm to provide specialized labor and employment counseling services. Uh, whereas the city of Augdensburg requires specialized labor and employment law counseling services, now, therefore, be it resolved, city managers authorized to sign a retention agreement with Coglin and Gerhart LLP to provide such services to the city of Augdensburg.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second it.
Uh, discussion?
Your second?
Yeah.
What is the specifics?
Specifics are our current, uh, legal firm. This is the same rate that our legal firms, our current law firms charged. Uh, some of the areas that we're, we're getting into, looking at the labor contracts, some of the disciplinary matters that we're facing. Our, our legal counsel just doesn't have the depth or the timeliness, uh, of, of number of employees to be able to respond timely. So, we won't be spending any additional money that we would have been spending with our current legal firm unless you calculate, they have to do a lot more research to do these things. So, our, our, our costs won't be any different than what they were going to be anyway. I'm just getting somebody to work for us that has a, a much greater understanding and experience with, uh, working with labor and employment law. I'm just getting somebody to work for us that has a, a much greater understanding and experience with working with labor and employment law.
How did we come to select this firm?
Excuse me, I was given a couple firms, references by our current law firm, and I looked at, I looked at the two of them, and ultimately, this, this firm has the experience in the area that specifically I'm looking for, largely in working with union contracts involving fire departments.
Give us a little more detail for the public as well as to where they're from and what they, they're obviously a labor firm. I'm familiar with them, but where they're based out of and?
Labor firm from, from Bingham to New York.
And was any other firms vetted or put out for?
Yeah, I, I looked at Bonn, Schenck, and King also.
I'm sorry?
Bonn, Schenck, and King, I looked at them also in Syracuse.
I would like to make an amendment, if I may. I'd like to suggest an amendment just to, to put a timeframe on this, uh, for six months from, uh, from this date in an effort to, you know, have some control over the cost, and I would make that motion.
I would like to put a dollar amount on it more than a timeframe, because I don't think that...
I, I don't know if we need that. I don't think we'll, we'll be near six months, but, uh...
I think it'll be beyond six months, quite frankly, and I don't think you can put a timeframe on this because it's labor. You might end up in arbitration. You don't, you don't know what the, where, where the paths are going to cross or whether they're going to cross in a crossroad. You can't, you can't really put a timeframe on something like this. If you were to do that and then, and then cancel the law firm and go with another law firm, you're starting from scratch again. And that, and that's nothing but a more of a burden to the taxpayer above and beyond this one. So, you know, it's, there's a lot of logistics here, you know, it's, it has to do with labor. You can't put a timeframe on that.
Counsel Reach?
My, my opinion.
Counsel Reach, I just, I, I agree largely with Counsel Powers that I secured a rate that was the same rate we're, we're doing now. So it, it, it wouldn't matter, you know, when we have issues, we're, we're going to have to use a, a law firm. So whether it's now, six months from now, or a year from now, I think it's important we have somebody that operates efficiently. I think this ultimately would save us money, and then I, I think we spend a lot of time now with our, our current law firm waiting for research and things that this, this firm may know, know better. So I understand your, your concern. I think probably more appropriate is I'll just more detail briefly to the issues that are coming forward so counsel can decide the length and duration that they want us to, to work the issue. And that, that'll be the way we control costs. Quite frankly, it's do we, do we take on an issue and see it through or, or do we not?
Personally, I just think our lawyer fees are, they're exorbitant. I mean, the lawyer fees are just, they're through the roof. I mean, we're, we're literally taking on water to not have to do things that we've said we were going to do. We're just taking on more costs to the taxpayers continuously. Everything we've done tonight has been at a cost to the taxpayers. So in a time when we're supposed to be doing a budget and we're going to have to be very tough and it's going to be a terrible budget, we're going to, and we're just taking on more expense, more expense, more. It doesn't make any sense what we are doing.
I agree.
It's, the expenses are adding up, the hostility is adding up, the morale is through the you-know-what, and here we are just spending more taxpayer dollars. It's, it's just getting to the point where it's out of hand. We're, now we gotta, we're getting additional lawyers, and now we are getting an accountant. Like, these are all things that we should be able to handle with what we have. If this law firm that we have that we use for the city is so great, they should be able to do it all, in my opinion. Like, we should not have to be having, we have, we have attorneys and lawyers that, one came in last week and people didn't even know we had them. You know what I mean? Like, this is, this is absolutely ridiculous.
Well, it doesn't matter which firm, if the cost is the same and one is more proficient, then that's a good move, I, I believe.
I can address Counsel Kennedy. Yeah, I, I don't, I disagree, Counsel, with, there's, uh, all the law firms that you just, just mentioned were engaged by some city council in the last two to 10 years, no question. Some of them, some of them catch me completely off-guard. There's no list, there's no pass-on list to the city attorney or anybody who we've got working. Some of these, for instance, the one last week and the police matter, those are hired by insurance companies. They don't, they don't cost us anything, so the, the insurance company hires a legal firm to, to represent us. But we, we do have a lot of legal costs. We, we need to be much more thoughtful in our decisions. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, you, you all know what I'm, what I'm doing here. We have five union contracts, five, that we should not have signed last year, five, that we cannot afford. So now, I'm in the position to have to figure out how to work our way out of those contracts so we can afford them. Now, if, if you all have ideas of how we can do that without doing that during this budget, I'll be absolutely open to them. But at the moment, the only way I see is we are going to have to reverse these, these labor contracts that were just signed in the last six months that, that we can't afford.
I think that if, I think that if counsel would have sat down with the labor unions, I think a lot more could have been accomplished than what was done with axes and pitchforks. I think if we would have sat down and had courteous conversations in January, more could have been accomplished than what we are dealing with and paying for today.
I think the time would have been November, December to...
But you were not counsel, and so your opinion doesn't matter.
So, oh, really, really, Nicole? That, that's when the agreements were made, and that's when things should have been done correctly.
No, 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 COVID matters. COVID, COVID's mattered, to the comment in the back, COVID matters, COVID's only made it worse. Make, make no mistake about it. COVID's made it worse. Uh, the, the attack on sales tax from the county has made it worse. I mean, a, all of our sources of revenue, any way you slice it, you can, you can take fire department out of the, the argument, you can take police department, you can take whatever department you want to take out of it, whatever department you're favoring or not favoring, you can take it out of it. It doesn't matter, the department. The only thing that really matters here, at the end of the day, and everybody needs to understand this as loud and clear as I can tell you, this is just about money in and money out. We can, we can sit here all night and add conjecture, we can add emotion, we can add support, but right now, it's just about money in and money out. Our, our sources of revenue are on a decline. There's not one person sitting here that largely is controlling that. None of you are controlling the fact that sales property tax is flat. That's, that's not controllable at the moment by seven individuals sitting here. I, it was none of you doing that the county largely last fall declared war on sales tax distribution, an issue that we're working and working and working, but I don't know where it's going to go. And then certainly nobody predicted COVID. These are just facts of where we are. So we're taking in less money, and nobody can possibly think that we can spend the same amount of money or more. That, that really is all this is about, and how we get to that now shouldn't be the source, I agree, Counsel Kennedy, it shouldn't be the source of all the animosity and all the duty that we're taking over. It's just, it's just an absolute fact. And, and until we just are determined to address the facts, instead of all the emotion and acting like there's some level of public outcry or public outrage that's going to change the situation, it's not going to change our revenue. So we largely have a nucleus. DPW, police, and fire, that's the nucleus of where the bulk of our, our money goes. Civilian pay money. Every, everybody else that we pay outside of that, there's so few left, it's barely worth talking about. And if you're bottom all, the only thing you're doing is limiting your ability to manage and administer the programs of the city. So what is the attack on, on those three organizations? It's not. It does just so happen that one of those organizations has a contract that stipulates staffing, and so largely, we've taken counsel's ability out of the equation to be able to manage the budget within that. So our choice is very ugly. Just continue to chip away at the two organizations that don't have that in their contract. That, that's it, until we figure out a way to increase revenue, which, which is also not going to be easy. If we find the magic solution tomorrow, if we're successful in starting the catalyst down on the, on the Bastar Richardson property, that's great, but, but we're talking several years before we start seeing the return on that. I'm hopeful we were invited to the Jefferson County or the St. Lawrence County Board of Legislators meeting to speak about the sales tax issue. They've heard us. I hope that we're going to be able to at least stabilize that so we know what revenue is coming in there. But this is, this is just a serious revenue issue that, Counsel, with all due respect, I, I sent you the information. You, you all, the three of you knew this, and, and all seven of you have known it now because I've been telling you. There's no secret, this city's been in a financial stress period for a long time, and we've still made decisions that acted as if that wasn't the case. A five and six and seven-year-level contracts are, are literally just irresponsible. We had no way of predicting. How did we tell those unions that we can, we can fund this for you over a seven-year period? Was no real belief that we could. So now the unions hiring an accountant, we're hiring a different accountant, all to tell us most likely what we know. We don't have enough money to pay for those things. So vilify whatever you want to vilify. Vilify me, vilify the new councils, doesn't matter who we vilify. The facts are still going to remain when it's all boiled down, that we don't have enough money coming in, and we're going to have to make a decision how we are going to, to, to work within the means that, that we have.
Oh, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. To piggyback Nicole's comment, and for starters, we have a resolution here. That, that, that's what we have going on here. This wasn't a, an opportunity, but regardless, prior to COVID, those contracts were negotiated in good faith with many concessions. I disagree with your statement that going forward, I am a state employee, and I am a product of three seven-year contracts with a state that's in the same fiscal issues. So at the end of the day, you can't predict COVID prior to us agreeing to those seven-year contracts. Those are good negotiated contracts with health insurance benefits that, that offset the cost over the life of that contract. But more importantly, we have a resolution on the floor that needs to be addressed. I have to agree with Counsel Kennedy in the fact that, and, and I'd like nothing more than, than to support your position at this point, but other than what you gave us in the consent agenda today, I don't have a whole lot to look at right now. I want to see the revenues, I want to see the payables going out, I want to see the, and as Counsel Kennedy said, I don't want to get off the target here, but we're throwing money out like we have it. You, you just said we don't have it.
The pay raises, I don't think a number was done at the time, but they came to $1,000,001,056,787 over the six years, and the, and when you put the benefits, increased benefits, it's probably over a million and a half dollars. Now, for the three previous years, our expenditures have grown over $500,000 a year. All this left to, we meet our New York State tax cap is $156,000.
I believe it was $180,000 with a 2% tax gap for the 2021 budget.
Okay, $180,000, I'm sorry, $180,000 when you're going up a half million dollars a year, and then you put $300,000 a year in pay increases and benefits on top of that. So now you're going up over $800,000 a year, but, but we can, we can raise $180,000 in that. So you can see where this is going. You know, expenditures are going to overtake our, our taxes, our, our, our income, and, um, you know, and then, you know, we, we put off a lot of necessities. The roof on this building, the fire department pool needs work, our, our fire trucks are 15 and 20 years old, our DPW equipment is probably majority is 20 years old. Our sewage pump stations are, we're going to have to try to come up with $6 million. Somewhere on the verge of failure, failure. We've already taken on a lot of debt. It's, it's serious. It's just serious, everyone.
If it's so serious, why don't we get the state in here to intervene and install a control board? If we're, let them take the fiduciary problems right out of our hands, let them make their decisions, and then, and then if whatever they see fit, let it happen. If, if you're saying that city council is not capable of making these decisions, let the state control board come in.
We're capable of making decisions. We, uh, the hiring, freezing, cuts have done, have saved a million dollars this year.
I haven't seen the actual statement that says we've saved, we've saved that.
But there's nothing left to cut.
I'd like to call the question on the resolution if we could and move on.
There's still discussion. I didn't get a chance to speak yet. So everybody has a chance to speak.
Yes, go ahead.
So I, you're, you're, I think you're incorrect on some of your numbers that you put out. The savings you left out on the health insurance was phenomenal, like hundreds of thousands of dollars per year just on the move in good faith concessions, as Mike said. Secondly, the fire department basically gave up four jobs through attrition that we agreed to. We wanted eight after careful consideration. We thought it would be dangerous to the community. Uh, the other thing that I think you're incorrect at is you said that we had expenditures over $500,000 a year for the last three years. Last year in 19, or 2019, we actually had almost a million, $979,000 in, uh, savings between revenues and expenses. And we started off this year with a $2.6 million fund balance that we're eating through by hiring union busting lawyers now. So, which is, which is all this attorney is, is a union busting talent.
If you look, your expenditures have gone.
No, I've got it right there, Mike.
Your expenditures have gone up over five, your insurance, your health insurance...
You guys haven't helped.
Then your health insurance went up $330,000 last year.
No.
So where was, where was the savings?
They decreased.
They did not go down.
They decreased.
They did not.
They most certainly did.
$330,000.
That's the concession.
In 2019, they went up $330,000.
The million dollars that you speak of is over a seven-year period of time that, that, that's reduced the, the... So the wage increase doesn't really include the reductions in staff. That's the, those are the concessions, that's what you're not seeing here.
The reduction in staff, so we go from 28 to 24, but no one, that's when people retire. But there's a five-man minimum staffing per shift. And so when we go to 24, now with that minimum staffing, what do we do? We pay someone overtime now to come in and be the fifth fireman? That, that five-man staffing should have went down with the 24. When you didn't take that down, you just left us where we, now we pay someone overtime to be the fifth one. You did not save anything with that agreement.
No, we, we saved a lot of money, but...
Well, your health insurance went up $330,000 last year.
That was in 19.
In 19, that's last, that's last year.
But we still saved over $20,000.
Zero increase in 2020.
Revenues from expenses.
Zero increase.
Could we please speak one at a time? I'm sitting here.
That's what we negotiated, zero increase.
Right. There'll be a zero increase. We sent an email out weeks ago about it.
Exactly.
Let's move the resolution.
Let's move the resolution. Kathy, would you call the roll?
Counsel Dillavah?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
No.
Counsel Powers?
No.
Counsel Reach?
Yes.
Counsel Scampoli?
No.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Approved.
Now we're at all business, and I believe, Steve, are you going to speak?
On the issue of the previous workplace balance complaints, I have, I've been able to, to retrieve all the, the original information. Despite all the discussions that's out there, there were, there were in fact two complaints in the, in the May timeframe. So I have those. The city will be continuing a proper investigation to bring the facts to bear on those matters, and I'll have a full report for counsel no later than the next meeting, and I'll try to get it to all of you before that. As far as compliance with the violations that we recited by PESH for the program, those largely are three violations we will have completed prior to the end of the month. Largely, our, our biggest issue to work through there was getting everybody through the training or getting documents in that we just, we didn't have. Some of you, quite honestly, just have documents from other employment places. We just didn't have copies of those. So I believe by the end of the month, we'll have all those violations, and we'll report it to the state that we've remedied those things. The other two are largely acts of performing a required review of the program and review of the previous year's complaints, although it will be a, a simple matter of us reconstituting the group, but lost a lot of, just, just lost a lot of faces, and, and the ball got dropped in 2019 in doing, doing those reviews. So we'll have all that, that cleaned up. As far as specifics, I don't, I have only a couple tonight that I'll cover in, in executive session. They're not anything that I'm ready to discuss in public.
And you have something on sales tax, or was there anything or no? I, I don't know what's on my sheet.
Yeah, no discussion or questions on the first one. Okay.
On the sales tax distribution?
No, just on the first one.
No, no.
Okay. So on the sales tax distribution, just from, from my perspective, we, we have done a series of meetings throughout the county with town supervisors, village mayors, legislators. We've sat now twice officially with the, the finance committee, a portion of the finance committee from the St. Lawrence County Board of Legislators. Largely, we, we haven't reached any, any, any compromise to their position that they want, they have a formula they want to, to use in our position of the, of the program that, that we submitted on behalf of ourselves and the towns and villages. I do feel like during the negotiations though, we've, we've, we've heard a lot of facts out there. I think a lot of... a lot of familiarity with each other's position has become a little more known, so I don't think the talks have been completely unproductive. I think we've had some good discussion in the last session. I felt like we convinced the county that this issue isn't quite as simple as Augsburg has not been minding its business, and that quite honestly, the current council is doing all they can do to reverse previous spending habits, if you will, or things that the county feels like we're just not doing enough. I think we're able to convince them that that's not entirely true. But the city also supported very actively and aggressively the county getting the additional 1%, up to the 8% sales tax that has largely bailed the county out of a very deep hole that they were in just a few years ago. So I think we were able to convince them that it is time, that that same consideration for the additional one penny, a little more of a percentage that go to the city and go to the towns and villages with the same intent, and then perhaps maybe it's time to give that eighth penny back. How long do we want to consider being the 8% sales tax county in New York State or one of? So we're going to have another meeting, we're going to present to the full board or one of the full committees, which is ultimately the full board, they have all their board members serve on all committees. We're going to present to them. So I will send information to all of you, I think it will be important that before we go and present to them that this council has a resolution of some sort adopted with what our position is. So I'll look for all of you, if you don't feel like you're 100% knowledgeable on what our request is, what the formula is, that you give me the feedback so we can craft our position, and then sometime between now and the end of the month, we really need to be able to say to the county, this is our position, this is what we want to negotiate from. Because I think largely what we're going to be asking the county is, we need a decision. Are you going to support Augsburg and ultimately revival, and really more acute the survival of our city and then ultimately revival? Or is it your desire to see Augsburg set free and we preempt and become a sales tax collection entity all to our own? We're doing the research and the work, that largely is what has taken a lot of the comptroller's time, is doing the research. We haven't had a lot of ability to get good granular information from the state. We've had to course through a list of 21,000 businesses from St. Lawrence County and determine which ones are attributable to Augsburg to be able to give you all an estimate of what we think would be an average sales tax year. We're using 2019 as a full year of data to be able to do that. I don't really have a lot of apprehension in the amount of money we may draw. My concern is that it's a pretty significant function, it's not something that somebody will do collateral duty. It's a lot of work to maintain that, maintain the records and make sure that every vendor that is in the city collecting sales taxes is paying directly to us. There's only, you know, 12 or 13 entities in the state that do this, so it's really not even something that the state is well set up to do below the county level in a lot of places. So I am a little concerned about that, it would certainly be cleaner for us to make a good deal with the county. So we'll see where that goes.
And this proposal largely comes from our two representatives on the county legislature that are elected by the residents of the city of Augsburg, or at least partly elected by the city of Augsburg.
There's just two now, Counselor, but I'm sorry, no, the presentation the county's proposing?
The proposal from the county and it's from our two legislators.
No, sir. Our two legislators, you know, Mr. Regan being solely representing the city of Augsburg, and Mr. Forsythe representing a portion of us as well as the town of Lisbon, they're squarely in favor of our proposal of what we'd like to have for a sales tax agreement. This largely comes from the finance committee led by Mr. Akers. And we proposed a 10-year agreement, we were willing to compromise right away with, hey, we really could, we could do this three years, give us the amount we're asking for for a three-year period, and let's see how it works and we'll come back. I think we have more room to compromise in what we want to do, but right now I think they're holding firm that they would like to treat everybody the same, have the sales tax distribution based on a combination of taxable property value and population.
So they've gone from wanting to take 100,000 from us to taking even more.
So we're working on the figures now, but yes, the population now, if you factor in, Counselor, we're most likely going to see a population drop with the 2020 census, yes, it would be more. Maybe as much as $300,000 or $400,000 more.
Yeah, the estimates are, they come out annually really, so we're going to lose 700 people and we're going to be at about 10,700, I think, right?
And hoping we stay there, correct? And again, and I don't know, the census will most likely be challenged, it always is, I don't know when there'll be numbers that'll be verifiable that we can use, and so part of this is we have to make a decision. We can't wait, we can't wait very long after the first of the year.
But the existing formula has nothing to do with population because it was based on actual revenues that the city collected and that, over an historical period of time, so I don't know why they want to change the formula and base it on something different, I guess to get more money from us.
Yes.
Correct. So they believe, again, if our population is similar to the village of Messina, why would the city get more than the village of Messina? We've argued several facts, and part of it is because we are a city and a lot of the services that villages or towns get from the county, or the village gets from the town, or the town gets from the county, whatever, we largely do all those things ourself. There's just a, there's an added inherent level of expenses that are higher when your factor is the city. So the 6.44 was an average, the percentage that we were largely getting was factored over many years. I think there was a lot of thought put into how we got the formula we got. I just think now, you know, the county has, the county's gotten well, they've gotten well on the eight cents. They've also gotten well because, again, I think they had a significant shift in the way the county board of legislators was running, a lot of hard decisions made at the county level, a lot of jobs cut, programs cut, things reduced. I mean, they made a lot of hard decisions in the last 10 years, I don't think anybody can doubt the county's in a far more better position today than what they were. I think our argument just is, we would like to be able to use a little greater percentage of that eight cent to do the same thing for the city, and most of the towns and the villages, especially in the wake of COVID, agree with that fact. And again, at some point you have to consider giving it back. If we don't, if we don't get the sales tax back to seven at some point, then the only potential future is it goes to 9%. Things either go up or they go down, and we're not, the longer it stays at eight, a more ingenious idea at some point would be to raise it to nine for some purpose, and that's, we just can't continue that.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else for, we're on old business? Okay, and this brings us to new business. Anyone have any new business?
Couple items I'm going to use.
So I just want to give you an update today on waterfront properties. We talked a lot tonight about growth and revival of the business area, in particular the waterfront, so as we've heard the last couple council meetings, no change, we have awarded grant to assist with marketing and planning for how to best, you know, sell the Diamond National property. So while we're waiting for that, Andy is doing all the work to establish the scope of work, we're going to bring at least three courses of action to all of you for the next meeting of what the types of proposals are, we think we would want to present our ideas that we would want to give to a contractor. Now, part of the idea of the marketing firm, hiring somebody, you know, at least with a regional pull, if not national, is to let, you know, create a scope of work and have them come in and then also bring us courses of action. But I want to lay out to you what Andy and I see as the best uses we think of that property. But as we head east down the waterfront, we have asked for the county's support, they've had a lot of success in cleaning up properties that are contaminated, so we've asked the county to work with us to, you know, kind of show us what your secret sauce is, what your magic has been for cleanup, so we're asking for their support with the Shade Roller property. Now, a little different than what they've been doing, largely they've been working on small sites that have largely petroleum contaminants. This site has got some other things in there than that, so it's a bit difficult. But I think it's going to mark the first project that we will work with the county to be able to, again, work collectively to bring the resources to bear to get these cleaned up. So, you know, you all know that property sits between our very nice 16-acre parcel of land that we want to market and the parcel that was being talked about tonight. So there's a real emphasis, a sense of urgency on our part to get that site cleaned up and make it, not just marketable going forward, but we certainly don't want anything to impact development that could occur on either side of that. So I've given them, that's our number one priority, is that Shade Roller for the moment. Continuing eastward down the waterfront, the other side of our marina, we've had some discussion with Mr. Pelda, who owns the first piece of property adjacent to us. He has some plans, he's got some ideas, nothing concrete at this point, he's got a couple other projects that we're bringing to completion now in Canada, but I do believe sometime in the coming year, we're going to hear from him on development of that property. So that brings us to the Augsburg property. So I've had discussions with each of the two private landowners, there's three parcels there, so the parcel to the left and all the way to the east are private owned, and the parcel in the middle was formerly a parcel owned by the Quans. And I say formerly because we're in a position as a city to be able to take that property back based on taxes, but again, trying to proceed cautiously here, what we don't want to do is put ourself in the chain of title with these properties. The state would immediately issue a government entity, some kind of a consent order, just because it will be viewed as having deep pockets and the ability to clean this up, when the truth is, we really don't. So again, we're going to be working with the county, the D E C, the EPA, to figure out how best to move forward, and then ultimately, the city will take complete control of that Kiwanis property. But I want it to clear by doing that, we will be calling in the regulators, I mean, we can't do this without the D E C's support, the EPA, and there's no way that they're going to focus on a small parcel of land when there are two larger parcels on either side that we know by study are largely contaminated. So once we start down this road, there won't be any turning back. The private landowners will most likely be notified that your property is not in compliance, and action will start to take place. So I've informed all of them of where we're going, we'd certainly like to work to help them get to where they want to go if they want to stay involved in it, but as I explained to one of the property owners, this isn't a piece of property in Manhattan on the Hudson River, that if it were contaminated, no developer would care, they would buy it at any cost, clean it up at any cost, and well-develop it and recoup their money easily. That's not the scenario here. This is property that will be very expensive to clean up, and as of the moment, we don't have any buyers, so. But I do think the time has come, I don't think you get much pushback from anybody in this community, the time has come for us to take control of this waterfront, get it cleaned up, and do our best to get it back in the tax roll. So we're all working cautiously, none of this will happen as fast as anybody wants it to, and even though the actions that I'm talking about now, it'll seem like two to three months will go by before I'll update you with anything even substantial that we're even moving in that direction. So I just wanted you all prepared for that, to know where we are, and we will start probably at the first of the year with a little more presentation-based and status-based briefings on where we are with each of these parcels.
Really glad to see an emphasis on waterfront development, thanks for working on the Kiwanis piece, and Mr. Pelda, Shade Roller with the county, I know they've done a good job, and I asked about S L P C, that's a big chunk of waterfront too, so we can get going on that, I'd like to see their last proposal.
Yes, sir. So our line of view tonight was just largely our beginning efforts to start to work on the governor's executive order on police reform and reinvention. So if we just flip the first page, this is a proposed steering group, and I'm bringing this all to you for the first time, so it's, I'm just looking for some discussion or at least to invoke some thought. What we're looking to do is just appoint a steering group, basically a group of five to seven of us that will largely establish the agenda, the process, and keep things going. This will be a very, very collaborative effort that will involve largely anybody and everybody who wants to be involved, but we've got to have a starting point. So my proposal is looking to the six blocks here. The governor's executive order directs that I lead the group, so I'm looking to have the police chief, a member of council, someone from the district attorney's office, the school superintendent who I have approached, and the hospital CEO that I haven't, but I'm using that as an idea of kind of some key leader figures in the community to largely steer this group where we need to go. Next slide, just highlighting through the executive order 203, these are the large, kind of the high points, a comprehensive review of the current police force, deployment strategies, policies, procedures, and practices. Develop a plan addressing the particular needs the community serves and promote community engagement to foster trust, fairness, and legitimacy, and address any racial bias and disproportion of policing of communities of color. Each chief of executive shall convene the head of the local police agency and stakeholders in the community to develop the plan. So again, this is, there's some communities in New York that have gotten way out in front of this, have done some great work, so we've already got some folks to be able to turn to for peer work from time to time, and we're going to do that. And there's some agencies right here in St. Lawrence County that have already begun and done good work. So we've got some people to turn to already who've tripped on a few things, but will learn some lessons. Stakeholders, these are all excerpts right from the executive orders, so this is the minimum group of stakeholders that we must be in contact with. And you can see that's pretty narrow, so again, our intent is to evolve, you know, any group in the city that wants to be involved with kind of organizing the effort, and then the types of inputs and changes that we look to see. Final plan certainly will be offered, has to be offered for public comment to all citizens, be presented to the council for ultimate adoption, and we have to have this done later than April 1st, so our timeline is growing a little bit short, but I think once we get to work, we can move through this fairly quickly. Our next steps will be to coordinate and collaborate with county and our local government entities. As I said, we've got some folks right here close by that are doing some good work with it already, and we've engaged some other cities of similar size and demographic to ours. The next thing that you'll see on the 11-9 council meeting is a timeline and the process we're going to use, and I hope to be able to identify at least kind of a broader list of stakeholders that we'll be engaging. And then ultimately standing by for whatever the state pumps out and changes from there. So it's just a quick snapshot of what we're doing, we are just getting started, we're largely, you know, a little bit behind. Well, I'd like to see us at this point, but I think we can get caught up relatively quickly, just again, based on the Messina's already got some good work, the sheriff's already in motion, we've reached out to the city of Corning, who's done some really, really good comprehensive work, informed a little collaborative group. They actually work within Steben County to do a countywide effort together, the sheriff and the city of Corning are kind of leading everybody. I don't know if we will be able to pull off such a feat here, we are going to talk to the sheriff about their approach and what he sees as kind of setting, you know, a standard throughout the county.
Excuse me, I got to use the restroom.
No, that's great.
When is the first meeting?
As soon as I get everybody pinned down, I hope week after next. I need to talk to the hospital CEO at the superintendent of schools, and I talked today.
I think I have to serve.
And the district attorney's office is getting a lot of requests for this, I'm just, I'll need to remember.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any new business? And this brings us to items for discussion, does anyone have any items for discussion?
Where are we at with the RFP for the accounting firm services for auditing?
We have all the bids, and it's just, it's a function Tim was working on that I haven't gotten yet, but we have all the bids in, we just have to evaluate that. I've got a couple, a couple of points I've just got to clarify, that as far as local, what preference, if any, we were giving to local companies? We had quite a few more bids this year than I think we have in previous years, so I just need to ascertain what preference, if any, we were giving to.
The current audit we had, they only went through the audit year of 2019, I'm on the audit committee, that's why I was curious.
And we haven't seen the A U D yet, I'm asking to read all the time for the A U D for 2019, we just haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, and I was just wondering, is it possible to get an audit done through September of 2020? We've had a lot of changing of the guard and hands and new hands in the pot, and I would like, if we could get some of the comprehensive audit to see where we are of an outside entity.
So Counselor, what I had planned as part of utilizing Gray and Gray was giving you the updated picture where we are, and then from there, if council, you know, wants to call for an additional audit from there, I mean, calling for an audit, that's a fairly significant.
No, Gray and Gray doesn't do audits.
No, absolutely not.
So they're not capable of performing that for us? I just think that there's been a lot of changing, there's other questions, I have several. Whose name are now on the city bank accounts due to the fact that we don't have a comptroller? They were Tim Johnson's, who has taken over those responsibilities?
I have, so assigned for all the accounts, they as the administrator, and then applicable people in the comptroller's office are assigned to write checks and sign for duties.
Nothing personal, but I have an issue with the being checks and balances, how... How, it's kind of like when somebody, if someone's healthcare proxy, they can't be in charge of the money. I just have, I would like to see something different done there. If that, it just, one per, there needs to be checks and balances as far as, some accounts we have, we have accounts that have lots of money in them.
I do.
We have accounts that have $30 million, $50 million for this wastewater sewage treatment plant. We have $20 million in the budget. I mean, there's just a lot of money, and then I just think that the person who makes the decisions shouldn't also control the checkbook.
So unfortunately, council, the, the charter directs, you know, me to assume these responsibilities. I, I didn't have a better plan.
Is there anybody who, who could do those duties? I'm just, I'm not looking to.
Yep.
I'm just, I'm, it's a genuine concern to know checks. I'm just, transparency hasn't been of the utmost, and I just, when money is involved, things get messy, and I'm not citing impropriety at anyone. I'm being interrupted, I have the floor.
I think you're out of order with this.
I'm not out of order. I have the floor, and you're interrupting me very rudely.
Well, you're out of order with insinuating things like.
I'm not insinuating. All I'm asking for is a series of checks and balances, and it's not, I don't give a shit what your opinion is. I'm not talking to you.
Let's, let's.
That's what.
Last language, eh? So anyways.
I have the floor. What is your issue with women talking?
And go ahead.
Well, now stop interrupting me. I can't get a thought out of my head without your big mouth on the downer.
Nicole, go ahead, proceed.
Thank you. I shouldn't even need your permission, though. So that was all I'm saying is, I think there's a clear need for checks and balances, and I clearly stated I wasn't insinuating anything or any type of impropriety, I was just asking for transparency. That was it. I didn't think I was doing anything wrong.
I think Mr. Jelly agreed with me.
And he agreed with me that he isn't, that is not the ideal situation. So what I'm just asking for is that does not remain the situation. Can we remedy that? I think that is a question that our taxpayers are curious of, who is controlling the city's money? And I think it's, it is up for an open discussion. It's not a secret who writes the checks in the city. I mean, it's taxpayers' money, they deserve to know, and they deserve to know, is this something that is, happens on a continual basis? Is this something that happens averagely? How long is an absence of a comptroller? What, what is the process? And we are in uncharted times. We did lose a comptroller, so those are legitimate questions. It was nothing to disrespect anybody, but those are serious questions that I have a responsibility to ask. Thank you.
So I will, I will provide the, the council with some recommended courses of action by the end of the week. I, I don't, they won't be vast, but I've got two or three in mind, less than all of you, and certainly we can socialize for discussion. I assume responsibility for the accounts, again, just today, so that we, we can ensure that we had signers. So it's not my intent, and I'm not signing checks at this point in the administrative account. I've got two people in the comptroller's office who are the signers for the checks. But I, but I will, I'll provide you other courses of action for someone to be the administrator of the account.
And I just want to make sure it's like somebody is making all of our bond payments timely, like they have all that information. I just know the email earlier leaked, so there's a lot of things with, that weren't being done, I just.
I think we have, we have all the, all the functions under control at this point, so. But I, I'll, I'll provide you the course of action, but what we can do different for someone to administer the accounts.
Like I said, it's nothing personal, it's just strictly.
Not taken.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And this brings us to citizen participation. Anyone that would, attending would like to talk, please come to the podium.
Just one second before you speak, Jen. I did get a message that the raised hand feature is not working. People trying to raise their hand for, they were trying to raise their hand for personal appearances, and they weren't able to.
And it wasn't showing, it's, it's right up on the screen as well, so I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just got a message, so I just said that I would.
I'll reach out to tax support.
If you could, yeah, I just said that I would let someone know.
Definitely, thank you.
Yep. Sorry, Jen, go ahead. I mean to interrupt your walk down.
Nope, that's fine.
I just wanted to get it in before they started, and I forgot.
No, I appreciate that. That's part of the reason I'm here, is for a point of order. I've received numerous inquiries from the public as I'm sitting there, and I also am wondering, Councilor Fisher is not in attendance at this evening's meeting, there was no notification that we can find anywhere that was noticed where he's having this meeting, if it's open to the public, if it's not, if it's COVID-related. So as a point of order, I just would like to make sure that we are following our municipal law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, first of all, last meeting, I asked a question to, to you, mayor and the council of who negotiated the city manager's contract. And as a taxpayer, I thought I was, you know, be able to find out, but I was told, you'll hear about it. So the next day, you went to your favorite TV station and, and told them who negotiated the contract, but you couldn't tell the taxpayers. Okay? Mr. Jelly, you sent a letter out to the public. Did you give these guys a copy of that letter about not, you know, name-calling and all that stuff? Well, what I just witnessed right here was atrocious. Maybe I'd start right here. Okay? And I'm thoroughly against, I'm thoroughly against a recreation facility manager and not a director of parks and recreation. Okay? We did that before, and it didn't work. You told me, right to my face one day, that you want to get a bigger and better recreation program than we had, and I supported you with that. Okay? But if you're going to go that way, it's not going to work. You need somebody that's got recreation background. You need somebody that knows how to develop programs. And to have it run out of the city manager's office, in all fairness to him, it's not the right way to go. You need somebody. It's worked for 40 years. A director of parks and recreation that ran facilities and ran programs. That's what you need. In your short, if we do that, you're a shortcut in this community. And the last thing I'll say, and I'll agree with what council here said, the raised hand. I was at my soccer game tonight, I had 20, 20 girls, 15, 16, and 17 years old. And one of their comments to me at the end of the game was, "Coach, you're going to the council meet." And I said, "Yeah." I said, "They're still there, I'm going." But they said, "Would you give them a message for us?" I said, "Sure, what is it?" They said, "Have them come out to a practice or a game and see how a team works, and see how communication works to be successful." So maybe you ought to try it under a voice from 15, 16, 17-year-old kids.
Anyone else like to speak?
Just a couple of quick ones. Counselor Reese, it was nice to hear from you back there. You spoke into the microphone for once. Since you guys really love amending the city charter, I'm wondering if you ought to move to Article 9(c)(18) for the city manager. States prior to appointment, this person shall be qualified by at least one year's training in public fin, uh, public admin and finance. That leads me to believe that he might not have that if we have to hire an accounting firm for $5,000 to wrap up the budget. Is that possible? Did we, did we do any background on his ability to do public finance? I'll take that as a no. Moving down, let's see, the attorneys that we hired, they wouldn't happen to be the same ones that represented the city of Watertown, were they? I know Mr. Jelly did intervene on a pro bono basis to try and bring the fire department in the city of Watertown together, and it, in the end, it cost the city of Watertown about one and a half million dollars, so I hope we're not going down that path. Any, any comment, or no need to respond to taxpayers? Lastly, I would like to commend Mr. and Mrs. Richardson for their hopeful investment in the city of Augsburg. One thing I do hope is that they take their assessment and go with it, and don't try and sue the city for what they've invested in their property. In cause along, drawn out legal battle and substantial bills. Because I noticed on the latest foil for the city attorneys, there's a lot of blacked-out, redacted info on there. But there was a lot of back and forth with the city attorney about being able to drink on the sidewalks. So that's a good one. Worth the money.
Anyone else?
Part of the problem is the digs that people from everywhere here give to all of you guys, not just the new ones, but the old ones. It's horrible. If you're going to come up and make a dig, I know I did the stooges, but I was trying to make a point with it, but if you're just going to come up and just throw digs at people, it doesn't work. Just do what you, like, the point that you want to do. Explain the facts of it. Don't make digs at people, whether it comes from you guys, like, we expect you guys to be, you know, better, but also you guys, you're citizens. You should be proud of this, please. And act proud. Well, it's true.
I haven't raised.
It's understandable, but you don't have to be mad at it. But you guys do it too.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. Is anyone remotely?
Well, we've been advised that it wasn't working, but I do have two individuals, as you can see up on the screen, that do have their hand raised. So we'll start with the first one. That individual is registered as Brian Mitchell, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open, sir.
Good evening. I'd just like to make a couple of points. Today, I actually got on the city website and just looked through and did sort of a quick review. One thing that stood out was, look at the city manager's responsibilities that is still on the website. And I was thinking, if somebody was got himself looking to move up to Augsburg, New York, they would see that he repairs the annual budget, that's a lie. Paying personnel, that's a lie. Policy advisor, that's a lie. That brought me to the next thing. I quit running commissions, because people like to get involved. Rec commission, empty. Audit committee, one person on it. So here we are, looking at our finances, we don't even have an audit committee. Sure has conflict and we brought up. The public has rights and our finances, we don't audit them. Executive board, always talked about. Negotiations, salaries, that's totally empty. So, Mr. Mayor, your job is to fill some of these committees. What are we doing here, besides just leaving them empty? If you come from outside the city and want to move in here, take a look at that city website. I mean, it's actually amazing, when you go through, look at the lies, the emptiness, and what's there. It would also make you wonder, the city manager, what is he doing? Four things are listed on his title, three of them he did not do. I'd just like to leave you at that point. I guess we learned tonight that citizens have opinions, according to the mayor, they don't count. So hope you guys have a good night, and thanks again.
All right, anyone else?
The next individual is registered as Felicia Dumas, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Felicia Dumas, it appears you are self-muted.
There we go, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Felicia Dumas, I'm the executive director of the St. Lawrence County Community Development Program, and I wanted to give the council an update on the Augsburg Neighborhood Center. I did speak about that in kind of our position last meeting, how we had to find a newer location. Just wanted to let the council know that the Augsburg Neighborhood Center, we had to close on Thursday, October 8th. That is thankfully a temporary closure through the end of this week, through Sunday, the 18th, and we're hoping to reopen in a new location on Monday, the 19th. That new location is on Telleran Street, so it's just across the street from City Hall. As I mentioned last time, this does, of course, come as an increased cost. Our agency, our agency's grant funding only covers the salary of the one individual we have working at all six neighborhood centers. We have six locations throughout the county. So we do not have it within our grant funding to pay the cost of rent, which of course we're going to have to. Incorrespondent point, so we, and we thank the city of Augsburg residents who have continued to support us throughout the years. We hope that they continue to do so, and that maybe the city council would consider supporting us in the future like other municipalities do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
There is another individual, that person is registered as Deborah Montgomery, and I will unmute that person now. It appears you are self-muted.
Hi, I'm sorry, I tuned in late, I didn't hear the whole council thing, but I did hear the woman that just spoke. And I don't understand why the neighborhood center was removed from the basement of City Hall, whereas it's been my entire lifetime. What is wrong with you people? I don't understand that. Why do you not listen to the people? I understand that you have an agenda, Mr. Mayor. I get it. But why aren't you listening to the people who voted you in, the people who will possibly vote you out? I don't understand. You ask for opinions, and then you don't listen to anyone. You guys are like a freight train going through our city. I am so disgusted with the situation that I tuned in earlier, and you weren't listening